Like I called Red Deer County Council to order, the time is nine thirty. Uh, the first order of businesses are agenda, Councilor Master.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've looked at the agenda and I think it's gonna be a nice short day, so I'll move the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry unanimously. Now we'll deal with the minutes from our March eleventh meeting. Councilor Moore.
Good morning, Ma Wood. Good morning, everyone. Uh, I would like to move the minutes of our March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting minutes as presented.
Councilor Master.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just a little spelling error. Online, I'm looking at the little blue minutes and I think the T and the U are mixed up.
Oh, yeah.
But then I look at, I don't even know how to spell minutes, but I'm pretty sure there's just a typo on three point one online.
You're correct.
Anything else? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Continuing on to reports, item number five point one, two thousand and twenty-four budget variance report as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Morning.
Good, good morning. And how are you doing this morning, Mr. Graves?
I'm doing good, thank you.
Good.
Alright, so we'll talk about, um, last year, um, C R N variance report. So, background, um, in the agenda package, um, we have the two thousand and twenty-four of, uh, variance. So with the operating and capital budget variance and we have the reserve transfers as well. So at the end of the year, December thirty-first, um, we were utilizing thirteen point two million dollars of our, uh, fifty-five million dollar line of credit. Just for reference, last year we were at eleven point seven million, uh, at that time. Um, there's a lot of different draws on our cash. Um, we had some outstanding, uh, invoices out to, uh, the regional airport for, uh, being reimbursed for airport drive and we also had some invoices out, um, to get reimbursed for U B F funding. So sometimes cash is in flux at the end of the year and we use our overdraft. Um, our financial analyst, uh, goes very detailed into the variance report, so you saw it in the agenda. So I'll just walk through some high level stuff in here. Um, so for taxes, we, we billed everybody, um, whether they pay or not is another question. So at the end of the, end of the year, we had six point nine million dollars outstanding of that. Four point seven million was, uh, related to linear. So for reference, last year, we were at six million dollars outstanding and four point four million of linear. So it's a tiny bit worse than it was the previous year. Uh, fines were a little, um, lower than, uh, budgeted because of some short-term staff reductions. Government transfers were, uh, government transfers were at eighty-seven percent. And that's due to, uh, a few projects being, not being fully completed and us deferring the revenue to complete those projects. So the main ones were our all-hazard incident management training, uh, funding and then various, uh, egg conservation grants. Uh, interest, uh, came in a little bit better than budgeted. Uh, we budget conservatively for interest. So that's interest from our long-term investments and then our general bank account. Licensing and permit revenue was very good this year. Um, you guys heard at G P C last year about our assessment and the number of permits that were processed. So the revenue came in well there. Uh, penalties are, um, high and that, that's a direct relationship to the amount of arrears that we have for taxes. The more arrears we have, the higher the penalty fees are. Land sales and user charges, um, so there's a lot in this one. We actually do have a plan in twenty-five to break this category into a few more smaller pieces, so it's easier to understand. On the land sales front, um, we sold two point seven million dollars worth of land, so just short of our three million dollar target. Waste management revenue came in two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars below what we, um, were hoping for. And that's due to volume, um, reductions in volumes. Uh, the big one in this category, well, two big ones, um, we had the cost recovery from the province for the junction forty-two roundabout in this line. That's because that roundabout is on highway forty-two, so that's the province's asset, so we run it through operating. So that project didn't go forward in twenty-four at Wayland twenty-five, so there's just a variance there. Um, and then the other one is we collected one point four nine million of, uh, bad debt recovery. So that's a good news there where we had someone on a tax payment plan. Franchise fees came in, um, better than expected because of a cash in lieu of fees payment for some electrical infrastructure in Liberty Landing. The other one I'll highlight is the da- disaster recovery. So, um, our, um, firefighters were deployed, um, for wildfires, so there was some additional revenue there. That's what that line is. And then net gains, um, on sale of assets. So there's a little bit there for just the regular auction proceeds we get for selling our vehicles. About the majority of that's actually made up of, we sold a couple parcels of land. Um, and so that's different than the land for resale because that's active land that we're marketing. This is land that's in our tangible capital assets, it's long-term land that we decided to sell. So the next slide, please. Operating expenses, uh, community services came in at eighty percent. Um, this had to do with some, um, consulting funds for various projects that were carried forward into two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, there is less spending in the rec programs area. This had to do a bit with the capacity, um, review that was done and how special programs were treated. Uh, but there's also less spent in our operating grants, um, rec board funding and then rec agreements came in less than we had budgeted. So that explains most of that variance. The other one is, uh, our transit budget. We had increased our budget for transit by fifteen percent, but, uh, that wasn't their, um, realized cost that we had with transit. So we had four hundred thousand dollars in savings in the transit line. Corporate services came in at a hundred and seven percent. Uh, the, the main item there is, uh, overdraft expense. So we were carrying, um, we were using our overdraft and with interest rates being higher, there's a higher cost for that. The other element in corporate services was in I T. We were a little bit, uh, over budget there and that had to do with some purchases, some ransomware software and then additional data storage costs that we experienced. General governance, uh, there were some savings in the council and C A O, um, area, some contingent funds that weren't used. There were some unused funds related to an ethics advisor and then some unused funds related to training and, uh, travel. In H R, we had, um, some savings in recruitment and training costs and a little bit of savings in our A D P payroll, software implementation as well. For operations, um, they came in at ninety-two percent. Um, you can tell they're the biggest line of the bunch, so eight percent less for them is a lot of money. Um, so in admin, um, they had some savings, uh, it's related to us taking a portion of salary and allocating it to capital. And so we did make an entry in the two thousand and twenty-five budget to account for that now. Bridges came in under and that was due to fewer repairs. Um, we did have some higher costs related to asset retirement obligation and then accretion expense. Ditch and water flows came in, um, a half million under budget and that had to do with, um, fewer spring and fall issues. And then also our view of the egg ditch, uh, maintenance program. Uh, winter operations came in under by almost three hundred thousand and then our, uh, road, our paved road maintenance, uh, about three hundred thousand less. Planning and development, fifty-four percent. This is a deceiving percentage and that has to do with that roundabout at junction forty-two I mentioned. That's where the expense side lived, so that was delayed. So that's the main reason that one is so high. So a little bit of savings, um, due to our retirement, so some salary savings as well in that area. Protective services, um, just about nailed it, uh, ninety-nine percent there. So, uh, they did have higher, um, staff costs due to that deployment, but there was the offsetting revenue related to that deployment. And then, uh, bad debt expense that, um, we budgeted a million dollars and it came in at seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So on the capital side, uh, start talking about the revenue first. So, uh, government transfers or grants, um, what was, what that was made up of was four point three million dollars of local government fiscal framework, one point two million dollars of Canadian Community Building Fund, so that's the gas tax used to be called. Uh, four point nine six million of U B F funding and nine hundred and ninety-four thousand of S T I P funding. Offsites, uh, were really good this past year. We had a large contribution, um, in an, in the gasoline alley area, so that came in better than expected. On the cost recovery side, it's a little bit more of that story of projects being delayed. So we had the provincially funded, um, tech projects. So that would be, uh, the rest area expansion, leave of roundabout, those got delayed. So the funding didn't come with those. And then also had to do with airport drive, just how we budgeted and how the actual project was proceeding. There was, uh, a delay, so we're, we're proceeding with phase three and the rest of it this year. So there's just a delay in that cost recovery. Capital expenditures came at seventy-two percent. So this is largely due to deferrals. So as I mentioned, the, the big deferrals is the por- a portion of airport drive, the rest area expansion, leave a Laura Ave, and then the remainder of the U B F build, uh, for broadband. Overall, we did have two point four million dollars of savings though in projects that were completed. So we had three hundred thousand in saving to the bridge program, nine hundred thousand in savings for paving. Uh, small roads came in, eight hundred thousand dollars in savings and then prelim engineering is going in, um, below budget. So looking at the, oh, I'll just mention that, that annexation expense that had to do with, um, the city of Red Deer's annexation of that parcel near Lynn Valley. And so this is us kind of disposing of our assets and giving up to the city. We just have to make an accounting entry for giving up those assets. Offsite levy transfers, so we had savings originally when we were budgeting for the junction forty-two rest area, roundabout. Um, we thought we were paying twenty-five percent and similar with the leave a Laura Ave, we thought we were paying twenty-five percent. Um, so there were savings experienced there, so that helped the reserve. Um, our Springbrook South, uh, development came in under budget as well, so we finished that this year. And so there were some savings as well there. So the two from reserve, the general reserve, um, that, there's quite a, a change and that has to do with, we, we got the hundred percent of the revenue we expected. We got all the revenue we wanted, we had some savings in operating. So the operating funds available for capital, we had nine million dollars more than we had budgeted. So that's a, that's a big difference. And then we had two point four million dollars in capital savings, so those are the major lumps that really changed this. So overall, our net reserve position, so that's the general reserve and offsite reserves, were only drawn down by six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's good. The main story, there's a lot of deferrals, it'll come, but that's good news. Next slide. So overall, it's a good news variance report. The change in funding balance is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five forty-one, which means that we recorded a minor loss in our equity. Communication plan is part of the agenda. This report has been shared online. The public can watch the video stream live or through recorded video with closed captioning capabilities. Direction on this matter will be included in the meeting minutes, which are published online and summarized in the county news. So the alternatives accept the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four budget variance report as information. Request further information, uh, deny council's recommendation. And we will be recommending that council accept the two thousand and twenty-four budget variance report as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four as information. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Uh, Councilor Ramsey, you have any questions?
Yeah, sure. I, I think it was, uh, as mentioned, a very detailed report. I, I think, I think you mentioned it towards the end and just for clarity, um, so any, any additional savings that, or any savings that were recognized in the budget just equated to a less draw from reserves.
Through the C A O to mayor and council, that's correct.
Counselor, Kenna.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I got a couple of questions. Um, the taxes collected part, is some of that like, uh, deferred, um, collection with oil companies? Is that's, is some of that coming out of that area where we're behind? Or is there any, uh, agreements with any oil companies to make up taxes?
Through the C A O to mayor and council. So the linear portion of the outstanding taxes was at four point seven million. And so we do have one company that it has a tax agreement with us that are making payments. Um, they do have, yeah, so, and then we had another one that we were trying to make an agreement with, but we're still not sure with. So those will continue to try and make agreements with them. And I, I understand that the province is putting together a new group. But we continue to use every tool we can to try and collect those taxes.
Thank you. If I can continue, um, another question, uh, the franchise fees is getting quite sizable. Um, we had talked before about, uh, putting that amount, since there's no allocation for it yet, into like a G I C or something and collecting interest. Has any of that happened? Mr. Graves?
Through the C A O to mayor and council. Uh, how we're treating that funds is it is be putting, it's being put into our general reserve and kept attractive, similar to our snow and ice, uh, reserve. And so right now, we don't allocate interest to specific reserves. It just will net through our whole budget and go to our general reserve where this money lives as well. So at this point in time, we're not accruing interest on the franchise fees.
Okay. Um. Oh, I'll save any others for after.
Counselor DePauw. Any questions? Counselor Holsman?
Thank you for the detailed report. I really do appreciate it and it's very easy to read, Mr. Graves. The only question that I have, um, I have a question on the township road three fifty-four, Little Red, the nine ninety-four K from the funding. Does that go to this year's project or was it the engineering portion?
Mr. Campbell.
Through the C A O to mayor and council, Counselor Holsman, that actually was towards the bridge structure three twenty-four, phase one last year.
That's what I thought. And we have not to date heard from the other grant then that we applied for.
For the Loman Bridge or for the other Little Red?
The other Little Red.
Actually, we have and it sounds like we were turned down.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
That's sad news, but at least we tried, no? And the only other thing I had was the, the cemetery funding, like we, I've heard, you know, people say we, we need to upgrade and keep our cemeteries up to date and it's forty-four thousand under budget. Is it advertised that they apply for that funding and they just don't see it? Or is it a grant process, the same as our halls? Could I just ask that question?
We can get it, we can get an answer back again if we don't have one.
Yeah, that's okay. I just, I was just curious if, if they have to advertise for it or ask for it or if it's a grant process or what they do with it. Thank you.
Yeah, through the C A O to, uh, mayor and council, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know, we'll get back to you on that one. Thank you.
Any others? Counselor Master.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. I'll try not to drag it out too much. I really liked that sale of land. Would that have been that full quarter section in Counselor Ramsey's area? Or is that a multitude of smaller parcels? I don't know what you call that one, the Kelvis Hill, the old bridge quarter.
Ms. Miller?
So through the C A O to mayor and council, they're separated out. So our land sales portion is only for junction forty-two in Springbrook and then the other land sales is, would include Kivasville. So we had a few of those, um, but they are, they are accounted for separately.
So Kivisill then has been sold.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's probably, it was eight ninety-four and that was the big one. So, okay, so Kivisill is gone. Thank you. That's that one. It looks like planning revenue was up busy year and I don't know what you said, whether it was assessments or something was the major part. And their expenses were way down and you had some reasons why. And one of the bigger ones looked in your, your report was understaffed. So is the staffing levels now brought back up for twenty-five or do we expect some same kind of good revenues in planning and less expenses?
Ms. Miller?
So through the C A O to mayor and council, um, no, we'll probably expect a little bit of, um, decrease. I'm gonna use, uh, Dave Dietrich's term, younger and cheaper. So we are, people, as retirement happen, we are bringing recruitment in and, um, that's just how it falls.
Sure, and I expect the expense side to go up because of that, filling the positions. On the revenue side, was that an anomaly that your revenue's up or do you expect that to continue at that nice higher level?
So with that one, we had that big fancy development called P N H, which, uh, really, uh, increased our revenue.
Okay, that's enough for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the great report and, and the answers.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Ma Wood. Um, thanks for the great report, Jeremy. You answered a lot of my questions along the way, so thank you very much. I just have a couple, and just because it pertained to my area, that five hundred and five thousand for the annexation. When you said it's a, it's a matter of dispersing of our assets, what, what would that be, just in case I'm, I'm asked about that?
Through the C A O to mayor and council, so that's the, the roads, culvers, all the different, uh, tangible capital assets that were ours and now are being annexed to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. And my other question was relating to the franchise fees. Um, even though that's in general reserve, that still could be accessed for a project, for example, like a dog park in Springbrook or something in gasoline alley. It's not, it's not restricted in any way?
Mr. Graves?
Through the C A O to mayor and council, yeah, we, we have been, um, keeping a tab on that amount of money. We know how much is allocated for that. And like I said, similar to the snow and ice reserve, like the winter reserve, that half million dollars should keep for that. So we have that, um, carved out.
Great. And then, uh, my final question is on the broadband. The amount stated, is that from the U B F? The, um, let me just put my glasses on here, uh, the seven point nine million out of the nine point one.
Through the C A O to mayor and council, that's in the capital?
Yes.
Sheets you're looking at? Yeah, so all the money spent in two thousand and twenty-four, um, in capital was related to the U B F build.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you wanna go around again? Counselor Ramsey, any more questions? Kenna?
Thank you. Uh, just one more on the, uh, the revenue side of things. Um, a lot of residential pays monthly, but you basically book the taxes when the tax notice goes out, correct? Is that part of the reason we're behind? Because, you know, it's only six months to the end of the year and so if their tax rate goes up, we've only collected higher for six months. I- is that part of the reasoning? Cause our year ends December thirty-first, right? So I'm, I'm just trying to understand how we're, we're that far behind is.
Through the, uh, C A O to mayor and council, so, um, how would I? The best way to describe it is, you know, we send the bill out to everybody. So we'll, once mill rates are set and assessment's set, we send the bill to everybody. Um, on the revenue side, it's just assume we're gonna get all the money. So then it goes through our sort of collection process or cash receiving process to get the rest. So people on a prepayment plan will have already have a credit on their account and then they just pay the last six months, like, type thing. So they'll be caught up. Those people will have paid us all our money. It's the ones where we sent the bill, they haven't paid us. So it's more, we get fluctuations in arrears and many reasons for fluctuations. Like recently, it's been oil and gas, you know, potentially not paying, you know, economic trends as well. But we have a strong collection process for residential and non-residential. It's linear where we don't have that strong collection process. So, um, it might take, uh, for example, it might take where we send the bill to somebody and they decide not to pay it. It could take up to three years for us to fully get all that money. But say on our, our farm or residential property, we have a lien on it. And so if it eventually gets sold or the bank steps in or whatever it is, we'll get paid. We don't have those types of tools for, um, linear where we can go and for sure get paid. So that's where you see a lot of these bad debt expenses coming in is there's, there's no hope of anything coming back to us in the collection process. So longs, I'll try and answer it more concisely. We bill it all out. Sometimes it might take up to three years for us to get all the money. And we, we're quite confident we're gonna get the money from residential, non-residential. Linear is not the same. It's a different story. We don't have the same tools.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Palm, Counselor Holsman, Counselor Master.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I forgot this is the first round. I want to talk of the reserves. And so we were sitting at that, and I don't know if you want the total general or the total restricted. I think the total restrict is probably a truer number because it takes those other reserves in or out of it. But we went from forty-three at the end of twenty-three and we had some estimates after that. And they were starting to decrease on the five-year plan and the reserves were starting to get a little bit, maybe frightful after five years. But it looks like in two thousand and twenty-four, we had a pretty good year and we jumped up to forty-five. So can you explain to me how that might affect the next three or four years? Is it just the two million increase that would be carried forward or does it affect it differently? It, it, I take it it's not as dire in five years or is it only not as dire by the two million that we, I guess, benefited in, in twenty-four now that the books are done? Because we're not doing twenty-five changes yet. This is just still the ending twenty-four, okay?
Mr. Graves?
Through the C A O to mayor and council. So when we present the reserves in budget time, you know, it's all best guesses and forecasts, right? And then here, now we have actuals, so we know what the total is. In some cases, when we see a lot of deferral of projects, we're just pushing things a year out. So we may have just, you know, obviously savings of two million dollars, two point four, that's a good thing. Like that'll help the reserve overall. But if we still have expenses to come, they just haven't come yet, that'll eventually come out of the reserves. So, um, we're gonna see shortly when I come to present mill rate options and other things, like some reserve projections out of what it'll look like. So, um, it, it, it's mostly a bit of a push, a little bit of a win. But I think you'll still see in years five, six, seven, we'll still be looking a little murky.
No, that, that helps. So save my reserve questions for the- No, that, that helps. So save my reserve questions for the next presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Just a question to Director Brandt regarding the, the firefighting. And it's great that we went and deployed and helped. Do we get fully compensated for that? Is there a loss to the county or do we write so much off?
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and council. Our deployment expenses actually are to the net benefit to the county from a financial perspective. And significantly so, the rates that are set are, are compensate as well because not only do we get paid for the personnel that go, but also the equipment that goes. So it, it does come back. It's a net financial benefit. Mr. Graves, when he made the comment and they're talking, something that we did notice when we looked at this twenty twenty-four budget variance was, was the wages on, on our paid-on-call firefighters. They've been historically high for the last three years. So coming out of COVID, we thought, we had that post-COVID spike and, and we thought, well, maybe it'll settle down. But it has, it has not seemed to settle down. So that's, that's not a spring budget amendment item, but that will be a next budget cycle item where we will reflect that we are historically seeing wages higher than budgeted on the paid-on-call side. So that higher wages there actually aren't related to the deployment. The deployment actually paid for the fact that we're responding to more calls here at home. And that's what kept us right on the line there. So, yeah, deployment is to our, is to our net benefit.
Counselor Ramsey, you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, sure, Mayor Wood. I, I would move that we receive this budget variance report as information.
Motion on the floor. Discussion. Counselor Kennett. Counselor Palm. Holsman.
I just want to comment that the report was very detailed and I thank you for that. And I guess my big comment was I like the fact that there was one point, point four nine in bad debts recovered. I, I like to see that. That helps us. And we're, we look like we're right on track. So thank you for the detail.
Counselor Muster?
I will make a comment. Based on the summary, I mean, it was a good news variance report. But our equity is down. So depreciation forced your equity down or because you sold some land to the city? If my equity is down, it's not such a good news, I didn't think.
Mr. Graves?
Through the C A O to mayor and council, I think it's good news in the sense that we thought we'd be a lot worse than this. And so it's good news compared to what the budget that was approved.
Can you speak to why our equity is down? What big line item created caused that?
It's a lot, a lot to, through the C A O to mayor and council, there's a lot of different moving parts in there. We, looking at the revenue situation, the operating situation, and then we have balance sheet related items. So that's, that's some of the things like, you know, when we, we have an annexation, how amortization is treated. It's a, it's a tricky question. There's a lot of moving parts, unfortunately. The reason we use the terminology good news is that we thought we, when we set the budget, we thought we would be going further into our.
Further, yeah. Okay. And I appreciate the good news and I see the good news in it, just that little bit of equity. But I, I think the way we handle capital costs lately, that huge number really affects it in two hundred thousand is nothing. So just a comment, excellent job, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mywood. Great report. I, I really found it easy to understand, Mr. Graves. So I want to compliment you on that. And I appreciate your honesty as you went through this report and said, yeah, things are good, but we've got a lot coming down the path. And I appreciate how many moving parts that there are in this, in this budget variance report. And I look forward to the discussions we're going to be having shortly as you bring forward the dreaded mill rate and, and everything else that will ensue. Thank you.
Good. And I just want to echo the comments on a great report. Great responses and able to ask, answer the questions as needed. You know, I, I think this is extremely important. I, I agree. It is, it is, it is a good news variance report. And I just want to say thanks for the great work. I, I feel really confident. And it's nice to feel confident sitting here on this side to, to look at that information that we're receiving and, and I can truly trust it. So. Counselor Ramsey, it was your motion. Do you want to close? No, all is in favor. Carried unanimously. Okay, continuing on to the next item, item number five point two, municipal addressing policy and faded signs replacement program. Good morning, Mr. True. How are you today?
Really good. Thank you very much.
Good to see you today.
Good to see you as well. Yeah, so the purpose of this one is to talk about some minor changes to our municipal addressing policy, the current policy, as well as look at extending the sign replacement program within that policy. The municipal, Alberta Municipal Affairs Addressing Project was implemented in two thousand eight. And it saw the county assign, create and install municipal addresses to all existing residences and, and businesses. After that, any new development had the sign assignment, creation and installation as a fee included in the development permit process. In two thousand fifteen, the municipal addressing policy number four point zero one one was created to help identify the roles and responsibilities of the county and the property owner in relation to the municipal addressing process and maintenance. However, by, sorry, I'm just moving along here. Okay. By two thousand sixteen, there were numerous reports of signs not lasting their expected ten-year warranty period, with numerous being faded beyond legibility. The county, a countywide inspection was conducted and the sign company provided replacements to all the required signs under the warranty, which were delivered to county residents in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand nineteen, it was decided by council to extend the period of sign replacement or the warranty sign replacement beyond the original warranty period provided by the sign company for additional five years. An amendment was added to the municipal addressing policy to include this, this exception to the property's owner responsibility and a more streamlined process for which signs, residents reporting and sign ordering was established. This ensured all eligible signs can be replaced one time, provided the property owner reported the need during the, the program term. So with the current policy, that warranty period ended on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And in that time, just around eighteen hundred signs of the eligible five thousand six hundred have been replaced. Extending the program for an additional five years would allow property owners of the remaining eligible signs to be claimed and replaced. It is recommended, however, that the replacement program come to an end on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine, as signs showing advanced fading after that point will surely be a function of their age and not so much of the original defect of the sign. Under the financial implications, council last year at budget time expressed interest in extending this warranty sign replacement program. So included a ten thousand dollar allowance in the two thousand twenty-five operating budget to continue the program with the anticipation that we'd review this policy and bring back some recommendations. If this policy is approved, a similar budget will need to be added in the two thousand twenty-six to twenty, two thousand twenty-nine operating budget. And this can be accommodated when we, when we start preparation of the operating budget later this year. As, as part of the agenda, this report is being shared online. The public can view this video stream live or through recorded videos with closed caption capabilities. Direction on this matter will be included in the meeting minutes, which are published online and summarized in the county news. So the alternatives for this would be to replace our council. That council replaces the municipal addressing policy four point zero one one with municipal addressing policy C one oh one dash two five, or deny administration's recommendation and request more information. At this time, the recommendation is that council replaces municipal addressing policy four point zero one one with municipal addressing policy C one zero one dash two five as presented.
Thank you for the report. This time looking for questions. Counselor Kennett?
Thank you. Question for you, and it actually relates to the next item we're going to be discussing. Would this apply when we change the name of a road to replacing those signs?
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and, and council, this is independent to road signs. This is very specific to the municipal addressing and, and not only the municipal addressing signs, but the, the certain inventoried signs that had the, the potential defects back in the time. So it's not just specific to the rural addressing signs, but certain ones within the past installation.
Okay. Another question. Have you noticed that it's certain facing direction? That has had the, the main issue? To give you an example, my sign and my neighbor's sign are about twenty feet apart. Theirs faces east, mine faces west. I've had to replace mine once. They haven't had to replace theirs. They were there at the same time. And mine's already starting to fade again. And I'm wondering if it's because it gets that afternoon heat and sun, whereas theirs only gets a morning type of sun. I've seen the same thing, north facing versus south facing. It's, I've noticed that there's a difference. But have you seen that at all? Or is, is it not been tracked or observed, I guess?
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and council, I don't think we have specific data on that. That is a, a, a good philosophy that any signs facing due south would, would see more sun wear. One of the specific problems we had with the original sign installation was that there was a batch defects from the sign company. So it wasn't their whole install. It was, it was a noted batch that they had done. And they didn't have really good data on specifically which signs those were because they were also mixed in with other shipments that went to other municipalities under different contracts. So we didn't have good information on, on specifically which ones those were in, in the batch, the defect batch that they did. So that made it challenging for us to, to do this replacement. But no, specifically to get back to your question. I would say, I don't know, Marty, if you notice that with any other like stop signs or, or, or if that's something that, that we run into. But, um, yeah, we don't have the data on, on that specifically.
Thank you.
Counselor Palm. Counselor Holsman?
Just, just a question. How are we going to approach the advertising for this? Is it just as people need them replaced? Or are we going to advertise that this program is open again?
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and council. Good question. I think over the last five years, we did see increased participation or requests for sign replacements when we, when we did some social media blitzes or, or increased advertising. So the fact that this is a changed policy and we're extending another five years, we would certainly advertise that. So, you know, we would have the information available on our website, obviously. And then we would, you know, county news and, and the regular things. But we, we certainly will advertise the, because this is an extension.
Thank you for that because I, I do see even in my travels, I try to write down sign numbers and contact them if I have to and send them in. Because I agree with Counselor Kennett, like some of them are just almost white. So it's, it becomes an emergency situation if they had to call out somebody and you wouldn't know where their blue sign is. So thanks for that, Mr. True.
Counselor Muster?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I've got comments, I have questions. You want questions, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll take you under comments if you want.
No, I'm going to try and get some questions with regards to the report and the new policy put forward. It's with regards to your ten thousand dollars you want. And then you want that every year for the next five years. And in the previous variance budget report, I heard sign replacement was thirteen thousand less than budgeted. So I don't know how much money is already in the budget to replace signs, but if it's coming in thirteen less than budgeted. And I guess this policy on this free replacement, Mr. Kennett wouldn't be eligible, would he? Because he's already got his one free one and his is fading, so he's not eligible. It's just that one little period of time that you get a free one if you've never got one. So which, and then I have another question. So we'll stick with that first question with regards to the ten thousand in the under budget already.
Mr. True?
Yeah, the ten thousand, that's a budget that we had carried from the previous five years. That was the, the yearly allowance. So last year at budget, council discussions on budget, I think there was just that, that desire to extend the program. So the previous amount was carried forward. The, the amount spent to it really is a function of who participates in the program. So it's getting the word out and it's up to the resident to call in and request that sign. So I, I do think that we're sort of getting to the point where, you know, as, as Counselor Holsman suggested, there's, you could drive the roads and see faded signs, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're eligible under this program. They have to be one of the original installed, you know, that we track. So there, there is, most of the signs out there are as identified in the policy. It is the responsibility of the homeowner to, to replace those once they're, they're faded, right? So it, without knowing how many people will participate in the, in the program going forward, we just carry that ten thousand dollars and, and carry that forward for the next four years. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, I guess, I'll, I'll try and simplify it. So it, it, I guess it bothered me is that the sign program was thirteen thousand under budget and we're talking about ten. Do you think you're using the ten on the replacement? And I get it. If you only use four, then we just carry forward and start with ten again, but you're not using it all every year. Or are you using that ten every year and you need maybe at least that ten or maybe more if people jump on this?
Mr. True?
I actually might have to go back in, in the operating previous budgets. But I think the, it was actually twenty thousand in previous years. So we reduced that to ten for this year, trying to make it a little more realistic to, to our expectation.
Because less are using it and that's fine. Okay.
Yep.
My apologies. Would you just want to clarify that this was a council amendment at budget time? This was not an administrative amendment? So this was approved by council through budget. So this has already been passed.
The ten thousand?
Correct.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to change it. I just was trying to feel, figure out the numbers from the thirteen and the ten. And the second question, I think Counselor Holsman talked about it a little bit too, is the policing of it. In, in my area, I see some faded signs because it was a acreage, but no one lives there. So it, it was a, a site and so it got that original blue sign. When assessment comes around every five years, do they note it? Or too bad landowner, if you don't hurry up and ask for your new blue sign, you're going to miss out on this program. So I guess the question is, who's policing this? The, and even if I replace my sign and it's starting to fade and now it's fading, but I just. So can you speak to the policing of the program? And then I'll save my comments for after the emotion is in, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and council. I don't think there is a policing aspect. I think the policy is clear that it's, it's the responsibility of the homeowner, the, you know, the, the replacement of the sign as needed. So it's just a very small portion within the policy that says, if you're eligible under this program, that we will provide the, the, the cost of replacing that sign. But there is no, we don't do it under our, under our sign inventory program. It really is the onus of the property owner to take responsibility of that sign and contacting us if it's eligible under the program.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So that was my question. And just so I know, it's kind of rolled over. So because we didn't spend all the money, another ten will go in and it will increase the, what's left by ten. Mr. True, is that right? There's already so much because we didn't spend it all last year. So it will roll over, like carry forward, I guess you would say. The old amount plus the new amount.
Through C A O to mayor and council, lost Jeremy, but I don't think that amount is, is, we just show that as a savings over, over in the variance. And then each year it's just budgeted. So that amount doesn't necessarily carry forward per se.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Perfect. Thank you for that. Um and my second question is regarding can we speak to the manufacturers and explain the weakness in the signs depending on which way which way um a property faces? Cause you know, I have a similar situation.
Yeah, I think I think that um these signs are, you know, they're it's a ten year life expectancy, right? So um you know, we're already past well past that point where um these signs could even possibly be replaced under the original deficiency. So there is definitely a a life expectancy on these and it will be different. Even though, like I said before, we don't necessarily have the stats, but just common sense is that any sign fading due south will will fade quicker. Um but yeah.
Okay, and I guess my final question is regarding emergency services. Are we liable in any way? If something happens and there's a fire and and the si- the sign is pale and they, you know, what's the what's the what would be the fallout for Red Deer County there? Any responsibility?
Yeah, through the C A O to mayor and council. I I think with the policy that clearly states that the um the responsibility of the sign is on the homeowner. I think that protects us. I don't know if you have anything to add there, Director Brown, but.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, through the through the C A O to mayor and council, um while the while the blue sign addressing is is beneficial to emergency services, it's not the only uh it's not the only thing upon which we or other services are reliant, so um we don't we don't see that that would cause a problem.
Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey. I guess the only question I would have um is is in comparison to other signs. Um and I don't know that answer and and maybe I'm I'm not sure who I'd ask it to. I always ask it to the C A O and but do stop signs and yield signs and checkerboard signs, are they are they toast after ten years or or are or are we seeing a different type of fading happening to these types of signs versus to other signs that we would purchase? Mr. Campbell.
Through the C A O to mayor and council. Actually, I just sent that question off to my public work staff just to see what if we have a trend. South facing and west facing, if there has been a trend on sign replacements, and I can bring that information back.
Thank you. And and my question was was basically to um not necessarily the direction that they fade, but are we seeing an unusual amount of fading on these on these signs that we're replacing now compared to other signs that we buy like stop signs and and those? Or do they typically last only ten years as well?
And again, uh through the C A O to mayor and council, that's something I'll check with our public works, same kind of question. My observations is there is a life cycle on the stops and yields as well. Ten years might be that, but I'll have to back that up with some actual facts.
Didn't mean to put you on a st- spot, sir. I just trying to figure out whether we're getting some bum signs or not, so that's all. Thank you. Uh back to uh we started with Counselor Kennett on this. We'd like to make a motion, sir.
Well, with that, um we've exceeded our ten year expected lifespan, but actually with uh manager Campbell's comments there, I would actually like to defer this to find because there's some information that they might have for us, but um I'm not gonna make that motion. I think we need to adjust this policy though, and I'd like to make an amendment. And that is not to the one time replacement, but if a sign has faded and they have picture evidence proving that it is faded, I would like to adjust the policy to that versus but I'm not sure how to make that motion exactly. Wondering if I could get some help from.
Mi- Mr. Hurstburg.
I got to ten twenty-four. Um yes, I think in that case, we would have a lot of questions of your intent. Because it's gonna depend on how old the sign is as well. So what the average expected age of the sign would be uh versus uh maybe the performance that it gave. So if we want to crack that policy and start to look at that, it's it's tough to advise you because I'm not exactly sure what it is you're shooting at there. What oh, so that's the wrong term for county sign. Um but what it is you're looking for for modification, but it's gonna it's gonna depend on how many years. And and its performance based on either warranty information or life expectancy, which Mr. Campbell is going to have dug up, so.
Yeah, um just to clarify my comments, I've been doing a lot of lawn signs for our federal election here. And I've noticed there's no standards. One nice thing about the blue signs is there is a standard and it's easy to find. And I'd be concerned with the cost of a blue sign for somebody to replace if they've already had one replaced. That they do something non-standard or not even bother, and then it makes it very difficult, so.
If we need more if we need more information, there's nothing wrong with deferring, sir.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move that we defer for more information on the signage. If direction has a has a if the direction the sign faces is having a detrimental effect on the lifespan of the signs. That's kind of the information I'd like to see.
We have a we have a motion to defer on the floor. We'll talk about deferral. Um Counselor DePalm.
So can I ask a question on this then?
Of course you can.
Okay, so are you saying if they've already used their one sign replacement through this program, then if their sign is faded again and it's past the ten years, they get another free sign? Is that what you're what you're going for?
I think what I think what we heard and make sure that I can't put words on I think what we've asked for is a deferral for further information regarding regarding uh the the lifespan of these signs and the directions that they face. Is there is there further reasons for your deferral, Counselor Kennett?
Um that's the main one. I'm just thinking that people who have them facing certain directions are gonna have to replace them much faster than others.
Okay, cause I guess I I'm a little confused because our sign faces dead south and it's completely fine. It's not faded, it's not nothing. So um I I I yeah, so I'm a little confused on what we're deferring and that.
I'm gonna I'm gonna just interject here just a little bit, just to try to help bring this thing back on the track. Um originally, there was some of our signs were just not very good signs at all. And they didn't last any amount of time. And and some of the signs that were originally put up are probably still healthy. So our program was set up to replace those defective signs that were never good in the first place, okay? Our program right now identifies that um home homeowners are responsible for replacing the a sign once it's beyond their warranty period, and I don't think that that's changed. What we're talking about today, though, is to try to get further information over are the signs we are, you know, some of these signs that we're replacing, they're not lasting either. And is it due to the direction that they're facing or other factors? Would that be something that you were is that or am I adding words to what you were trying to say, sir?
No, and that's that's my intent because uh I've actually I know of two places that have replaced their signs and their new signs are already completely washed out again. And they're not eligible. But they've for whatever reason, they've uh got an issue with their sign.
And then I noticed Mr. Hurstburg's got his light on over there and saying, why in the hell isn't he answering me? And I see it's on, so sorry about that, sir. But anyways, your your turn is now.
Thank you. Not that anxious, it's okay. One could contemplate, I'm trying to speak directly to the idea of deferral. Uh we are going into the second quarter of the year and without this policy being changed, anyone who currently is having a warranty issue with those signs would not yet be eligible to receive a sign. So it's maybe an unintended consequence of deferral would be that uh we do have some people who are waiting to replace their sign. Um I could suggest respectfully that uh you could make this amendment and still make the request for some additional information and you could always modify the policy uh further as well, but perhaps the recommendation isn't necessarily at odds with the extra information. It might be a yes and moment for council. I would recommend that you have a policy in place that still addresses the intent of what was put into the budget and making sure that policy follows that. Uh we could end up a month or two later down the road and people are perhaps not replacing a sign we would wish them to replace as a result of waiting to find out what the policy change might be, and that could create a inadvertent or unintended risk. Probably a minor, but it is a potential. So I just wanted to bring that up on deferral.
Tha- thank you for that for those comments on um and Counselor Kennett, you you still want to defer?
Uh well, I can retract that motion, but I will amend the following to um the council replaces the municipal addressing policy four point zero one one with municipal address policy C one oh one dash twenty-five with the following amendment that if a sign has been shown to be faded with picture evidence proof, that would be included.
And while administration's contemplating that, I'm gonna call a recess because I I'm at I'm at my full hour and that's what where I can handle. So we'll come back in ten minutes. We left that for administration to, to record it. I'm not sure if there's any recommendations came back or forth. Anyways councillor Kennett, you had the floor when we, when we, when we recessed. Are you fine with what you had said? Are we good?
Well, to be honest, I'm still not sure what adminis- like.
Yeah, let's try that. Ms. Ms. Rodwell, how did you take that motion to read?
That council replaced municipal addressing policy four point zero one one with municipal addressing policy C one oh one dash twenty five with the following amendment. By amending section fourteen by deleting exception and replacing it with exceptions. By adding a new section fourteen B, the county will provide replacement signs for all signs where the owner has provided evidence of advanced levels of fading or degradation as a result of the natural environment, not related to physical damage.
So with that, that would take away just pitting or natural wear and tear. Is that?
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council. I'm not sure of the term pitting, apologize, like.
Like from gravel hitting it?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, that's, I think. Do you see that a lot out there? I think they're just by the location of the signs themselves. Yeah, they're, they're on property line. I'd be surprised if we, I haven't seen that out there. But that's something you more see on a, on a, on a road sign like a just because of the proximity to the road surface itself. The address sign should be closer to fence line. I wouldn't suspect we'd see that as much.
I don't think I've seen it. The only thing I've ever seen is maybe somebody hit it with a vehicle or something, honestly, in the ditch. With what you've presented, should there be an end date too? I think that's what I had heard from administration that there should be a.
That would be your option as the mover. We were just providing language based on what we had heard thus far. But right now, the way that it would be interpreted is that it would be an open ended replacement clause in perpetuity.
Yeah, and that's not my intent at all. I think my intent would be to the December thirty first, twenty twenty nine, like fourteen A.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear that, how that started in a second. We know your intent.
We would just add that in there. New section fourteen B, the county will provide replacement for all signs where the owner has provided evidence of advanced levels of fading or degradation as a result of the natural environment, not related to physical damage.
So with that, that would take away just pitting or natural wear and tear. Is that?
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council. I'm not sure of the term pitting, apologize, like.
Like from gravel hitting it?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, that's, I think. Do you see that a lot out there? I think they're just by the location of the signs themselves. Yeah, they're, they're on property line. I'd be surprised if we, I haven't seen that out there. But that's something you more see on a, on a, on a road sign like a just because of the proximity to the road surface itself. The address sign should be closer to fence line. I wouldn't suspect we'd see that as much.
I don't think I've seen it. The only thing I've ever seen is maybe somebody hit it with a vehicle or something, honestly, in the ditch. With what you've presented, should there be an end date too? I think that's what I had heard from administration that there should be a.
That would be your option as the mover. We were just providing language based on what we had heard thus far. But right now, the way that it would be interpreted is that it would be an open ended replacement clause in perpetuity.
Yeah, and that's not my intent at all. I think my intent would be to the December thirty first, twenty twenty nine, like fourteen A.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear that, how that started in a second. We know your intent.
We would just add that in there. New section fourteen B, the county will provide replacement for all signs where the owner has provided evidence of advanced levels of fading or degradation as a result of the natural environment, not related to physical damage until December thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Is that your words?
Sounds really good. Thank you.
Councillor Pomp.
I guess I can live with that. The only thing is if so in four years, if they fade again, because they're in the same location, then they don't, regardless if they, if they have replaced their sign in four years, they don't get another one. Regardless if they've replaced it once already or twice because of the elements. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, through the CAO to mayor and council, that's that is the intent of this policy is to, is to the shorter two parts to it is to, to assign responsibility to the homeowner on the future replacement on that sign, whether it's eight years or whether it's fifteen or twenty years. The separate section where we have this warranty replacement program is just with respect to the, the initial installed signs back in two thousand eight, nine and ten. Where there was notable defects. So when people call in currently, when people call in with a faded sign, we go to an inventory and make sure that the sign that they're requesting to replace is one of the original signs under the program. So if, if I'm not mistaken, the way that this amendment would read Samantha is that this is just a five year replacement of any faded sign regardless of if it was originally installed or after. Yeah, so that, 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 that changes the, the nature of the policy a little bit in that we are now replacing signs. All, all the signs in the county if, if they're faded.
Okay, and then after this date, regardless if they've got replaced their sign two to three times and it's faded again, they don't get any more. They have to pay for it themselves.
Correct, correct. And I, I would without without, you know, that the $10,000 allotment was a reasonable budget from the last five years of, of doing this specified replacement. If we open it up to replacing all faded signs, 10,000 may, may not be enough. We might have to just replace up to our budget and then or we replace whatever the request is this year and then account for that in a budget variance that it was. Yeah, but this, this definitely opens up the, the the number of signs that could be eligible for replacement.
Okay, so I guess the question would be, do we have to address that right now then? Or do we just do what you said up to the amount of 10,000? And then everyone's cut off for the year until the following year, next budget cycle?
Mr. Hursburg.
I think it's, it's an option for council. You could limit it by, by having an upset limit in your policy that up to $10,000 a year would be spent in that. It's certainly something I've seen in other types of policies. I would, I would address some of the questioning with maybe a little bit of policy insight. If this were to not exist whatsoever, no policy guidance whatsoever, we would still look ratepayers or residents of Red Deer County who are going about their duty of maintaining a safe sign for, for all the reasons that we know that's a good idea. Would still, if this, if none of this existed, would still have the option of coming in should they feel that the performance of the sign isn't adequate for the price of the sign. And there is some ability for us to work with suppliers to ensure that signs are performing the way they are. We don't need an exact policy for that, but it's okay to have one that, that is, that's clarifying some of that. But if, if none of this were being discussed, I would still look for staff to take a look at someone coming in after three or four years saying, why is this sign completely ruined? And, and we would look to see that they would get some replacement or some relief from that because they're expensive. And they should last a period of time for the amount of money that people are having to pay for them. They should get some value out of that. And I do recognize with councillor Kennett's comments that the positioning of the sign could definitely have an impact as to how long it might last. But there should be a reasonable minimum time, amount of time that we could expect that for the dollar spent by the individual, that they're getting some value. And you know, the, the idea of 10 years has always been there, but the fact we're using terms like advanced aging does allow staff a little bit of a ability to look into that particular situation. Should it be your sign coming in councillor to palm? Saying, well, bought this five years ago. Is this really supposed to, is that what a five year sign looks like? And so that could address for a variety of reasons why your sign might look different. If none of this were in place, I'd still say that, that council can be assured that staff would take a look at that way because we can go to bat for the people who paid for the sign if we feel that they didn't get value for that sign. We've had that one time occurrence, which was quite a large sign fatality, quite a large sign failure. But there's still going to be little ones in between that. And I think we still should be confident that, that staff can still address those issues where we feel that that value wasn't necessarily achieved for, for the, for the high value that some of these signs are costing people.
Okay, I guess just my concern is I, I just don't know if we have to amend the budget in case we go, all of a sudden everybody rushes in with their new, their, they've already got a free sign and now they're, a whole bunch come back in and say their signs are faded and we got to do all those. And all of a sudden we're maxed out at our 10,000 is, is my only concern. Like so I, I guess I just, I'm not sure.
Right, thank you. And specific to that, if I may. You have two things that are somewhat, council is giving us sort of two pieces of direction. They're giving us a budget allocation and, and with typically the expectation we, we work towards staying within our budget. But policy direction that would throw us over budget should have people come in at that period of time. So there is a gap right now in terms of those two things are causing something different. We could turn a blind eye and spend $20,000 back in a year and report that we're over budget by $10,000. And you might feel that as a council, that was a good $10,000 spent because it's safer if we have better signs out there. But you're right in that right now, the way things are, those two things are a little bit in opposition to each other. So one way to solve that is you could ask staff to come up with a different estimate of the amount of money, make a different amendment. Or you could, you could put an upset limit on it and say at a certain amount per year in this program, we could cease replacing them through this, this avenue and look to have people reapply in the new year when funds become available again, and then get aware of what your upset limit is. I'm not if that's a great idea, but it is one way to, to clarify the issue that you're pointing out because I agree with you.
Okay, well, then I'm not sure what to do.
Slur Holzman.
Well, I know we just built a new residence and I don't remember those signs being so expensive. And I know I can't off the top of my head, I think it was only like $40 or something like that. So that's what I'm struggling with. Is that correct? It's less? Thirty? Okay, so that in my mind changes the whole thing. Where this policy is about the signs that we had from two thousand eight, nine and ten that faded. And this policy relates to those that were defective through the manufacturer. So I can't support the, the motion as presented by Mr. Kennett because we're, we're, we're talking two different annals here that I see. We're talking about the original policy on the ones that were defective. The second policy, and I completely concur, that if I have one that continues to fail, I would hope that if I come into council and into planning and say, you know, I just got this, we moved two years ago and it's already white. I would hope that somebody would take a look at it for me. And I think those are the one offs that Mr. True, you and your department could bring back to process and say this year we had 2,000 that were failed and that's another failure, a different manufacturer and it's a different thing. But for $30, I, I can't see worrying about increasing a budget and doing all this deferral. I, I really, it's, it's the policy that's here now from the signs that were the original manufacturer. That's what I will support.
Councillor Massier.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Councillor Holzman. That was a good one because I'm with you. Let's get these oh eight to ten signs replaced for someone. And I'm getting to the point where that's 15 years ago. I'm upset that the warranty is 10 years. I think that's too short. I'm looking forward to administration back to say how long signs really are lasting, how long they should last. And maybe that has to get put into this policy. Because with this amendment, you know, I heard the landowner is going to take a picture, the landowner is going to take the sign down and bring it in. The landlord is going to phone and say it's faded. In whose eyes is it faded? Is it white? Is it kind of starting to fade? But it's already 13, 14 years old and it'll last five more, but geez, it's 15 years old and this is a way for me to get a free sign because I'm going to save 30 bucks? I'm not going to support the policy because I don't think we need it in it. I look forward to staff coming back to say that it's a 10 year warranty. And maybe then move that we go to a 15 year warranty period that we replace signs or something because of weather and which way they're facing. Because I give you, if you're unlucky to be on that side of the road, you might fade out quicker. But what's quicker mean? 20 years, 25 years, 12 years? I think that's the point is how many years should a damn sign last? And this amendment is not addressing that issue. So I'm not supporting the amendment. Let's get the policy in place to replace the, the bad ones. We've got something with regards to responsibility of signs. And I look forward to staff coming back with saying how long these signs should last. And that's a discussion on another day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Some more.
Thank you. So yeah, well said, councillor Holzman and councillor Massier. Because I think this has got various unintended consequences. And I can see it being very onerous. I'm happy to hear there is a mechanism for someone to bring a sign in and that it will be looked at and if it's deemed defective, that it will be renewed. So I, I won't be supporting the amended motion for those reasons. And I also look forward, I think it's really worthwhile comparing those stop signs and what, who the province uses compared to our lifespan, you know, just so that we know and we are more educated. Because, you know, I have to say, I've had two faded signs on my properties. I've had no problem getting new ones. I've driven around and I have, you know, if I see a faded sign, I take a note, I let the landowner know. And the staff have been really good and we even have a blue sign sign, not a blue, a sign for blue signs. If you want to come and collect your sign, you know, I think we've done everything we can and we're not stopping that. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting the amendment today.
Slur Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yeah, I, I struggle with this a little bit too. You know, I kind of like where councillor Kennett is going to be honest. You know, I, I like the blue signs. I see that we're going to have issues as, as time goes on. And, and I worry, you know, whether it's $30 or what the fee is, you know, we're, we're offering free ones to these folks that have had warranty issues and, and that was two thousand eight and there's still a ton of them out there that, that haven't got replaced yet. So, you know, I think there needs to be some sort of incentive for folks to actually get, get the new sign up. And, and I think, you know, when I originally proposed this at budget time, the $10,000 in the budget was to try and have a limit to how much we do. And, and I, I completely agree that should be a cap. And, you know, we get up to that in a year and you got to wait till the, the following fiscal year to get your, your sign. You know, I, the, the part I'm struggling a little bit with is the amendment. You know, a little bit without having all of the, the data to kind of back what direction we should go. I, I think it's a good idea to include the, the non warranted signs from two thousand eight to two thousand ten as, as part of the program and how we can help property owners with those. But I, I think we could have tackled a little, a little bit differently. I, I do have a few of the warranty signs that, that people would like to get done. We're already a quarter of the way through the year. And, and so it would really be nice to, to see this get passed and, and how we look at the rest of it. I'm not really sure, but I, I don't see it as, as a big budget issue. I, I think we have that cap. I don't think people are running necessarily to get these signs replaced. I, I think there's a lot of people that don't know or, or don't don't want to go through the hassle of getting ones. And I've seen them go out and just Sharpie their sign. You know, so, so we, we need to get these things replaced and, and if even if they fall outside of these years and, and they need a new sign, like let's, let's help them with that. So I, I will support the motion with the amendment. Like I said, I, I would have liked to look at it a little bit differently, but I, I think, you know, it's achievable enough and we have that, that budget in there. Kind of guiding this policy a little bit too. So yeah, I, I will support it.
Hey, thanks for your comments. Before you close, I'll make a comment. You know, I'm kind of feeling for, for those folks. and into uh planning and say, you know, I just got this, we moved two years ago and it's already white, I would hope that somebody would take a look at it for me. And I think those are the one offs that Mr. True, you and your department could bring back through process and say this year we had 2,000 that were failed and that's another failure, a different manufacturer, and it's a different thing. But for $30, I I can't see worrying about increasing a budget and doing all this deferral. I I really it's it's the policy that's here now from the signs that were the original manufacturer. That's what I will support.
Counselor Massier.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Counselor Holzman. That was a good one because I'm with you. Let's get these oh eight to 10 signs replaced for someone. And I'm getting to the point where that's 15 years ago. I I'm upset that the warranty is 10 years. I think that's too short. I'm looking forward to administration back to say how long signs really are lasting, how long they should last. And maybe that has to get put into this policy. Because with this amendment, you know, I heard the landowner is going to take a picture, the landowner is going to take the sign down and bring it in. The landlord is going to phone and say it's faded. And whose eyes is it faded? Is it white? Is it kind of starting to fade? But it's already 13, 14 years old and it'll last five more, but geez, it's 15 years old and this is a way for me to get a free sign because I'm gonna save 30 bucks. I'm not gonna support the policy because I don't think we need it in it. I look forward to staff coming back to say that it's a 10 year warranty and maybe then um move that we go to a 15 year warranty period that we replace signs or something because of weather and which way they're facing. Because I give you if you're unlucky to be on that side of the road, you might fade out quicker. But what's quicker mean? 20 years, 25 years, 12 years? I think that's the point is how many years should a damn sign last? And this amendment is not addressing that issue. So I I'm not supporting the amendment. Let's get the policy uh in place to replace the the bad ones. We've got something with regards to responsibility of signs. And I look forward to staff coming back with saying how long these signs should last. And that's a discussion on another day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Some more.
Thank you. So uh yeah, well said, um Counselor Holzman and Counselor Massier because I think this has got uh various unintended consequences. And I can see it being very onerous. Um. I'm happy to hear there is a mechanism for someone to bring a sign in and that it will be looked at and if it's deemed defective, that it will be renewed. So I I won't be supporting the amended um motion um for those reasons. And I also look forward. I think it's really worthwhile comparing those stop signs and what who the province uses compared to our lifespan, you know, just so that we know and we are more educated because you know, I have to say I've had two faded signs on my properties. I've had no problem um getting new ones. I've driven around and I have, you know, if I see a faded sign, I take a note, I let the landowner know. And the staff have been really good and we even have a blue sign sign, not a blue sign for blue signs. If you want to come and collect your sign, you know, I think we've done everything we can and that we're not stopping that. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting the amendment today.
Slur Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um, yeah, I I struggle with this a little bit too. You know, I kind of like where Counselor Kennett is going to be honest. You know, I I like the blue signs. I I see that we're going to have issues as as time goes on and and I worry, you know, whether it's $30 or what the fee is, you know, we're we're offering free ones to these folks that have had warranty issues and and that was 2008 and there's still a ton of them out there that that haven't got replaced yet. So you know, I think there needs to be some sort of incentive for folks to actually get get the new sign up. And and I think, you know, when I originally proposed this at budget time, the $10,000 dollars in the budget was to try and have a limit to how much we do. And and I I completely agree that should be a cap. And uh, you know, we get up to that in a year and you gotta wait till the the following fiscal year to get your your sign. You know, I the the part I'm struggling a little bit with is the amendment uh you know, a little bit without having all of the the data to kind of back what direction we should go. I I think it's a good idea to include the the non-warranted signs from 2008 to 2010 as as part of the program and how we can help property owners with those. But I I think we could have tackled a little a little bit differently. I I do have a few of the warranty signs that that people would like to get done. We're already a quarter of the way through the year and and so it would really be nice to to see this get passed and and how we look at the rest of it. I'm not really sure, but I I don't see it as as a big budget issue. I I think we have that cap. I don't think people are running necessarily to get these signs replaced. I I think there's a lot of people that don't know or or don't don't want to go through the hassle of getting ones. And I've seen them go out and just Sharpie their sign. You know, so so we we need to get these things replaced and and if even if they fall outside of these years and and they need a new sign, like let's let's help them with that. So I I will support the motion with the amendment. Um, like I said, I I would have liked to look at it a little bit differently, but I I think you know, it's achievable enough and we have that that budget in there kind of guiding this policy a little bit too. So yeah, I I will support it.
Hey, thanks for your comments. Uh, before you close, I'll make a comment. Um. You know, I I'm kind of feeling for for those folks that um I've had their second sign fail already and I ask the question why? You know, they're they're kind of they're kind of caught up in this and no different than the first people that had their signs fail. You ask why, you know, and what I'm hearing is administration is is willing to look at anybody that has a sign fail early. So I guess if the sign is failing early, why not just streamline the process and you know, if the sign is failing, you know, let's replace it and have administration figure out what they need to do with the sign company if if there's if the if there are those circumstances. And if there's not, there's not. Uh, I look at it, I fully agree. Let's set the limit at $10,000. You know, and and let's go on this, you know, we're making our assumption we might have a huge run on this or we may not. I'd I'd just like to see this resolved and have everyone feel that they've been treated fairly. And you know what? It's going to end in 2029. And I I think that uh the Counselor Kennett's amendment makes sense. Actually, actually it does. And um I I think that our 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 folks that we supply these signs, we're kind of the people on the hook that look bad when they don't turn out. And and long and the short of it is we're gonna have an upset deadline date on this thing and everyone's going to be clear. And I think it'll it'll actually make it easier for administration. They're not gonna have to look back forth and see who got one and didn't get one. So I mean, I might even make it easier for them. But I fully agree. I mean, we're not going to replace someone's sign because it's not faded. I think I think Counselor Kennett's motion is clear. It's got to be it's got it. The sign has to be defective or we're not changing it out. So I think that was clear. Um, Counselor Kennett, close. If you choose.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm not not just like a minor fade thinking here. I'm thinking about signs that have actually physically failed the second time around. I've seen some that like Counselor Ramsey says, you couldn't read what was on there and they've taken a marker or whatever else or glued on the signs. The one nice thing about the blue signs is it it really stands out in the county. If a person gets some of these signs that come from a Home Depot or something, they kind of blend in a lot of times to the architecture. Whereas this is just a safety feature. You know, the our uh on mailboxes, if you still have mail delivery, you write your your address on there. It's not the the blue sign. But it is a very good standard, I think, that we need to encourage to be maintained. And uh, I don't think it's going to be a huge run like we look at this whole program. I think you said in your report, 1,400 plus minus for the years that it's been on like that's it's not huge people running to this, but there is some that have had serious issues and that's why I brought it the amendment forward. So that's where I stand with this. Thank you.
Okay, so before we vote, I and the way I accepted this motion, I just want to make everyone clear on this. We didn't accept this as an amendment. He made a motion amended, correct? So if we if we defeat this, then it would have to come back for for a new motion, one way or another. If it's passed, it stays as it is. I'm just saying, I just saying how it works is I because I as I was hearing counsel talk about they're talking about amendments. This this is the motion is been made. It's been amended from what administration said, but he made a motion specifically with certain terms in it. Okay, so we're all clear what we're voting on? Okay, okay, that's that's good. So Ms. Rodwell, please, please, um, please identify what we're gonna vote on. Thank you.
That council replaced municipal addressing policy 4.011 with municipal addressing policy C101-25 with the following amendment. By amending section 14 by deleting exception and replacing it with exceptions. By adding a new section 14B as follows, the county will provide replacements for all signs where the owner has provided evidence of advanced levels of fading or degradation as a result of the natural environment not related to physical damage until December 31st, 2029.
For the clarification, for clarification, okay, Counselor Counselor Moore followed by Counselor Holzman.
So having listened to the um the text there, uh, thank you, Ms. Rodwell. Can I just ask a question? Are we doing that now if someone comes in with a sign that is a newer sign but is faded? Can they come into it and and get a new sign? If it's deemed defective?
Mr. True.
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council, uh, no. The only signs that we'll replace are under the current policy, which are very specific to the original signs installed between 2008, nine and 10. So there any sign that was replaced after certain thresholds, particularly particularly new developments where it's on the any new sign on a new development now, it's on the onus of the developer to purchase and install their signs. If those have faded and and we're probably at a 10 year marker where there are those, um, we wouldn't replace those today. Only the ones applicable to the original install.
Okay, so I misunderstood because I thought I heard my mistake that anyone can come in and if it's failed again and you provide the evidence that administration or that will help. So you get one shot? Okay, that changes my mind.
Counselor Holzman.
That was going to be my question as well. I was under the understanding that if they came in and they were completely faded, that administration would take a look at it. And it's not the case. It's only the ones eight, nine and 10. Okay.
Under the, yeah.
Counselor DePalm.
So out of curiosity, uh, I'm I I guess and I don't know if you have these numbers, how many roughly in estimate have we said no to that have come in that their second sign has been defective, but we've already said no to them?
Yeah, through the CAO to mayor and council, I I do not have that information.
Okay.
And and I don't know, not that I I'm not aware of it. I don't think it's something that we track. Um, we do have an inventory of of how many signs are out there. And so we can subtract those total number with the um, you know, the 5,600 uh that are applicable under the current policy. Um, so we do have that information, but we don't know which ones have I guess per se been rejected because they don't fit the requirements of the current policy.
Okay, because they've already got a sign, but then their new sign has faded as well. Okay, thank you.
Is is there anyone else that was just to for the for the clarification before we vote? Okay, we're all aware of the motion. Um, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um. Continuing on to the next item, item number 5.3 in our agenda, road naming, that is the Springbrook to CNE Trail. Good morning and how are you today?
Good morning, I'm fine.
Good. We're doing pretty good here too.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. True.
The purpose of this report is to consider naming a new roadway located from Springbrook to CNE Trail as illustrated on the attached plan. The road plan is a continuation of Airport Drive within the hamlet of Springbrook, heading north to Township Road 374, then curving west to CNE Trail. The road plan was acquired and registered on December 15th, 2023 and April 18th, 24, and construction is underway along Airport Drive. The subdivision and roadway naming policy states names shall be determined and applied in accordance with specific requirements set out in these guidelines and procedures. Final approval shall be granted by County Council. Administration is proposing to name the roadway Airport Way. The proposed name will help create clarity for the community, airport tents and visitors. In accordance with the subdivision and roadway naming policy, a road that may change direction is defined as a way. Red Deer County will be responsible for installing the road signs at their cost. Hopefully they don't fade. This request was referred to the county's GS department and Red Deer Regional Airport. No concerns have been received from either department. The recommendation from administration is for council to approve the request of the road name adjacent to Red Deer Regional Airport to be Airport Way. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Um, questions, starting with Counselor DePalm. Counselor Holzman. Counselor Massier. Counselor Moore. Counselor Ramsey. Counselor Kennett.
Yes, I have a question. There is, I think, three, if not four acreages, one on the way and the other ones that I think are gonna be from uh the Township 374. Those addresses are going to be changing. Is the county replacing those signs? Or those residents?
Through the CAO to mayor and council. Um, yeah, we are aware that even Airport Drive, regardless of what this is named, there are a couple of residents that will be impacted by this new road going in. We do have some policy where if we are the ones that change the address, we will um cover any costs associated with that average ad address change. So we will be working on uh that address change and any costs associated with Canada Post.
Thank you. And my other question is, have they been notified that their address may change?
To date, they haven't been. Um, we were waiting for the change in the road name and then we will proceed with contacting each one of those residents and letting them know of the change and and what this means.
Thank you. Counselor DePalm would like to make a motion.
Sure. I would move um that the road request for the road name adjacent to Red Deer Regional Airport continuing Airport Drive from Township Road 374 to CNE Trail to be named Airport Way.
Any discussion? Counselor Massier.
I think that's wonderful because when we first came out, it was going to be turning off CNE Trail on what, on Township Road 374? And then take some new road and I don't know what road that was going to be. Now, you could have, I guess, called it Airport Drive South and Airport Drive North. But the way you came up with Airport Way, I think that's new clarity for a new road. And I'm coming down CNE Trail and I need to know where to turn to the airport. I tear an airport roadway and then 374, I take it will continue at that curve and that'll still be 374 out there. Excellent job, excellent name, fully supportive of the motion.
Any other comments? Counselor Moore.
Yes, I I'd support Counselor DePalm's motion. I think it's quite exciting really because it kind of heralds the bright future that uh we're all hoping for with the airport and all the development that's gone on there. So I think this is quite momentous and significant.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, continuing on, next item. Thank you very much. Uh, item number 5.4, uh, CAO bylaw amendment. I'm sure that must be Ms. Rodwell. And how are you?
I'm fine. How are you, counsel? Good morning. Uh, today we'd like you to consider an amendment to your current CAO bylaw. In 2024, council approved a new chief administrative officer bylaw, also known as a CAO bylaw. In the Municipal Government Act, sections 553.1 and 553.2 allow a municipality to add certain costs to a tax roll. Some of these responsibilities lie with council and some of them lie with the municipality. It's recommended that these responsibilities be clearly delegated to the CAO for consistency to reduce red tape and increase efficiency. The costs that can be added to the tax roll are clearly defined in the Municipal Government Act, restricting the possible actions of the CAO to either applying the cost to a tax roll or not applying the cost to a tax roll. Some of the costs that can be applied to the tax roll by council include public utility connections, which are set by council through the fee bylaw. Utility fees, which are set by council through the fee bylaw. Section 595, which is only applicable to improvement districts and therefore doesn't apply to Red Deer County. Tax recovery proceedings, which are legislated by the MGA. And when we do proceed to a tax auction, that process is annually established by council. Fire response, which is established by council through the fire services bylaw and associated fees in the fee bylaw. Snow clearing costs, which are set by the municipality by council through bylaw. Unpaid costs of a composite assessment review board or land and property rights tribunal. So council has a jurisdiction to establish a composite assessment review board by bylaw, which you've done. The land and property rights tribunal is established by the provincial government. Council has no jurisdiction over the content of a decision or the awarding of costs. So even though this one is um, it says council has to do this one, you really don't have a ton of choices on this one because you don't have jurisdiction over those decisions. And then section 646 orders, which are orders when someone's refused to comply with something like a stop order or order of a subdivision and development appeal board. And council can set the development and subdivision authorities through the land use bylaw and establishes the provisions through the SDAB through the appeals board bylaw. So we're just trying to lay out for you and make sure it's clear that the only things that the CAO would be allowed to uh charge to a tax roll is a fee or something that you've already set or you've already established. So we're just trying to reduce the red tape so that when you've required a fee to be charged, administration has the authority to collect that fee on your behalf without having to come back to council and unnecessarily make a matter political uh when it doesn't need to be political. These are just the charging of costs typically in accordance with the bylaws you've established. Next slide. So our alternatives today are to grant first reading of bylaw 1004/2025-A, a bylaw to amend bylaw number 2024/03 to allow the CAO to add costs to a tax roll in accordance with Municipal Government Act or defeat the bylaw leaving the current provisions of the Municipal Government Act in place. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Uh, we'll go to questions. We'll start with Counselor Holzman.
So just a quick question. This was our the original bylaw 202403 was the one that we set up after the governance review, correct? So this was, this is just an amendment to it to set out the specifics of the MGA.
Yes, this is just a matter that's arisen where a member of administration from finance asked if the charge could be charged to a tax roll. And we were going to have to write a council report, prepare a council presentation, uh, delay the entire process in order to get in front of council. And we said, if we're going to do this work anyway, why don't we do this work once? And add this as a CAO delegation instead of having to do this every single time a fee needs to be added to a tax roll.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Massier.
Interesting. It came up in finance that they wanted to add something to a tax roll and it had to come in front of council. I've sat here 15 years and I don't recall any ever in front of council to get our permission to add a bill to the tax roll because they didn't pay a fee or they didn't do something. So in my mind, it wasn't broken. And now do we foresee that people are going to quit paying their bills? And that we're just going to quickly slip it on to their taxes and council won't be aware of it? Or I'm struggling with why all of a sudden it's so important for the CAO to add stuff to a tax roll when I didn't really know it was a problem before? That's my first question.
So administrative administration has several different methods that we go through to try to collect our fees. Uh, some of the fees have penalties on them if they're not paid. Uh, some of them can go to collections. Uh, so that's another option, but when those do fail, sometimes they do need to be applied to the tax roll. So the example that we're currently looking at is fees where we did pay to extinguish a fire. Um, and numerous methods have been attempted to collect those fees and we've been unsuccessful in collecting them. And so we're we're left with not a ton of options. And so in this, you know, fairly unique case, we were looking at applying them to the tax roll and didn't have the authority to do so. So it's pretty rare that it occurs, uh, but sometimes it does need to happen.
Okay, can I keep going on the same question?
You can go ahead as long as you're asking questions.
Yeah, no, they are. So based on that example, sometimes people do a a development without the proper permit. So then they come and get the proper permit. And right now the fee bylaw says you double their application fee or something to that effect. And so you're doing that as administration. Is that correct? That's how it would be handled today?
That's correct because council's established a fee by bylaw giving administration the authority to enforce that fee, yeah.
And then most law by citizens pay the double bill and complain to their counselor, but whatever. The next question is if someone says, I'm not paying that fire bill and you sent the collections and they just refused to pay. And now we'd like to give the CAO the ability to just whip it on their taxes instead of coming in front of council to put it on their taxes. Would council have the ability to waive that bill? Could we say, you know, the poor guy, it wasn't his fault, his house burned down, we'll waive that charge. Just would would council have that ability?
Ms. Rodwell.
It is my interpretation that council would not have the, that ability. The ability that the M G A gives you is to waive a penalty charged to taxes. So if someone didn't pay that portion of their taxes and a penalty was applied, you could waive the penalty, but I don't believe you can waive an entire tax bill.
No, I'm not waiving the entire tax bill. I'm waiving that additional.
But that's, that, as soon as it becomes on the tax roll, it becomes the tax bill.
Just wondering if it's better for us to put it on the tax bill or if it's better for C A O to put it on the tax bill? I need time to think, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I'll come back. Counselor, Counselor Moore.
Thank you. So best practices, is every other municipality doing this?
You're seeing it different in different places, but most certainly, this is contemplated in other municipalities. If you want more detailed analysis on that, we could defer this matter and provide that to you in the future.
Okay, I would be interested in, in saying best practices. My other question is, so, just so I'm clear, admin is executing policy passed by council as stated in the M G A. That's the assurance I need, and that's, that's it?
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's why we did kind of, we went through each one of those costs that's identified in, in 553.1 to try to make it very clear that you've already set all of these. We're just trying to implement them the way that you established them. You told us to collect them. Let us collect them through to the end of the process. And in very rare circumstances, that requires us to charge them to a tax roll.
That's all I need. Thank you, Ms. Rodwell.
Counselor Ramsey.
My question was answered, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kanna.
So I have a question. Fire response. If you're in litigation with their, the insurance company, for example, and they're refusing to pay, do you, does this allow then just to throw it on the property owner's tax bill?
That one might be more technical than my expertise. My understanding is that even, so even if you're appealing your property assessment, your taxes are still due. And if you're successful and you win the assessment, we refund your taxes. It, it's a, it's a really common process. So the two things don't typically negate each other in that example, but I would defer to Mr. Brand if he has any information on what would happen specifically related to fire litigation.
Mr. Brown.
Certainly, through the C A O to Mayor and Council, so. Sorry. One of the things that, well, will fire protection fees are one of, fire response fees are one of the fees we're discussing here. The current fire bylaw for the county already allows us to do this. So administratively, so where we often see response fees going to collections are where there is no physical land or property in the county. So motor vehicle collision billing, boat rescues, things like that. So maybe it's somebody who lives outside the county, and we're billing them for that. They choose not to pay. And then it goes off to collections because we have nothing to essentially lean against. The, the current fire bylaw does allow for this. Generally speaking, when it comes to the insurance piece, we do not see, we have not historically seen major challenges when it's tied to real property. Unless, for some reason, the person was uninsured and they're in a, in a legislative dispute with their own insurance that way. That said, that's where there is a power for this, because it's, it's a reasonable cost that was incurred. We often do work quite so. Under the C A O's office, as administration, we would work through that. If a bill went out for somebody for a fire response and they had questions about it, we would work with them on figuring out the, you know, how accurate that was, how true that was, what their capability of payment was. And we, we try to avoid assigning things to tax rolls as much as possible, and historically, we are able to. We've had some fairly large bills in the last couple of years that we thought may become controversial that were paid by the insurance companies.
And just one other question. This doesn't apply to like speeding tickets or stop sign tickets that protective services would issue? That, that goes through a separate thing through licensing and registration, correct?
Yeah, through the C A O to Mayor and Council, that's, that's correct. So those are, those would, those are provincial tickets that are written, and those are prosecuted in a different way through the provincial court system. So this does not apply to something like that. Nor, nor is it, is it proposed that it's something like a, a bylaw enforcement ticket on a real property either. That, that would go through its same process that we currently have.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor De Palma, any questions?
Mine were basically answered. I guess the one thing, not a question, comment, I, I would like to see some best practices from other municipalities as well.
Thank you. Counselor Holsman, you wanna, oh, we wanted to go around again, didn't we? Someone else, another question? Did you have another, no one, no further questions? Well, comments, and Counselor, Counselor Holsman would like to make a motion?
Well, quite personally, I, I would like to defer this and get that information from other areas. I, I I'd like to know what types of things we can ask, ask for added to the tax roll. That, that's where I'm coming from. I, I don't know what types of things we would put on the tax roll. If I could get clarification on that, because I, I just struggle with this. Like, I, I can see the, the fire thing and motor vehicles. That came up in my area a couple of years ago. There was an incident where there was an automobile crash and the, it was a young guy and he didn't have insurance. So those, I, I'd just like to see some exemplars of what we could add to the tax roll under this, is where I'm coming from.
So just a question administration, so we're clear. You've given us a list of items. Is this an extensive list, or are there other items that you, you could foresee?
So this is the entire list of authorities where the M G A has given council the ability to apply, apply a fee to the tax roll. So public utility connection is just that. So it's, it's connecting to a water wastewater system, things of that element. Those are all listed in your fee bylaw in those utility sections. Same with your utility fees, again, water wastewater primarily in Red Deer County. Mr. True's not here anymore. I think storms also in there. But very limited, and they're all set out in the fee bylaw. 595 doesn't apply, tax recovery proceedings. So that's where we go to a tax auction. Someone has failed on a multi-year basis to pay for their taxes, and we've had to go through certain proceedings. We have the ability to take the cost that we have associated with those proceedings and put them on a, on a tax roll. Fire response is what's in the Fire Services bylaws. So our call out to respond to a fire. I do have that bylaw up. And it's very specific. It's the fees and charges described in the fee bylaw. Again, that bylaw you see every year. Fire Services has its own section. Snow clearing costs, this one is a little bit, can be split. So in a lot of municipalities, this is sidewalk shoveling. And the way that we have it worded in, in our bylaws is a little bit different. You're seeing this in our road protection bylaw. And that's where council's establishing it. Composite assessments, review boards, and land and property rights tribunal, they're writing their own decisions. And so it would be costs that you would see in one of those decisions. Costs in a CARB or an L P R T, I believe, are quite rare. And I'm gonna look at Ms. Carrillo, who I believe has over 15 years' experience. Have you ever seen a fee awarded by a CARB or the L P R T?
When the regulations came in and enabled fees to be levied, there were a couple. They went to the courts, and they were shot down. So I don't believe there have been anymore.
And then the Section 646 orders is those refusals to apply to a stop order, an order of the subdivision and development appeal board. And again, I'm trying to think of an example where you would be applying fees on a tax roll related to a stop order. Again, this is a very rare circumstance. It would be, something would have had to have been so detrimental that the county would have had to take action. And the county would have charged them for the county's steps. But do you have an example?
The only one that I remember was when we had a house that was moved on to a property. And, and then it was essentially abandoned. The county did take matters. It went through the process, and we actually had to incur the costs to remove that house from that property. And then those costs were put on the taxes.
And then what we don't mention here is the 553.2, because the municipality can do this. And typically, municipality can sometimes be interpreted as the C A O. Where a business who fails to pay their license, who, who was a licensee under a license of occupation granted by the municipality, who owes the municipality for costs incurred by the municipality in restoring lands under the land use of that license. So we believe those are already likely within the C A O's jurisdiction. So these are the only fees that council can apply to a tax roll. And again, very rarely used, very rarely seen. But on that, that rare one-off, that's why we brought it forward.
Okay, I, I never asked any questions to start with Counselor Holsman. Would it be okay if I asked the questions while you're contemplating this? Would you, would you mind? Yes. So I, I guess, I guess my question would be is that what this is, what we're, what administration is trying to accomplish here is you're, you're, you're asking council to delegate our responsibility to the C A O in these matters that are only outlined on the screen, correct? No other matters?
That is correct.
And that all the matters that are on this screen are already outlined by fee bylaws and other, other regulations that council has already approved?
With the very limited exception of the CARBs or the L P R T, where council really doesn't actually have jurisdiction over those matters. And possibly Section 646 orders, where there is those limited opportunities where administration may have issued a stop order. So council may have not been involved in the setting of that stop order. In your role on M P C, you may have some involvement. But again, it's not a council role. But typically, that's whoever you've set as a development authority or subdivision authority, which administration does have a role in. But again, you've set that by bylaw. So you've set it by bylaw, but you wouldn't be the one issuing those orders. So that's kind of the, the two scenarios where council hasn't set a service level standard.
Okay, and the reason that I'm hearing, tell me the reason that we're ruling this again?
It is for red tape reduction so that we don't have to face delays. Where, you know, we're typically about two weeks to a month in report writing and preparation and presenting to council. So anytime one of these fees would be required, we'd have about a two-week to, two to four-week process to get it on a council agenda and get a council response. We also tend to see these matters become sometimes unnecessarily political, because now you're putting council in a situation where council's being asked to levy a cost direct against one ratepayer when you've already set these fees for the entirety of the county. It's the same sort of scenario as, help me with the unsightly premise, orders for those. Section, is orders to remedy. That's another example where you've delegated the authority for orders to remedy to an appeal board, the nuisance abatement appeal board, because they become highly political and you end up essentially having what looks and often feels like a bit of a public hearing in a council forum, where councils, all of a sudden, in almost that debate role with the public on the awarding of a cost or the, the charging of a cost, when you've already set the cost standard by bylaw. So where you've established all these, and you've done these in Red Deer County, we're hoping that to allow for the, the timely collection of those fees that you would delegate this to the C A O.
Thank you. Give the floor, Counselor Holsman.
But my, I just want to comment that I, I would like to know if council would be notified if that's put on a tax bill. That's where, I just feel like I don't want to have a ratepayer call me that a fee has been put on their tax roll, and I'm not aware as council. So I, I'm not making the motion, I'm sorry.
You don't, you don't have to.
Yeah, well, you asked me to, and I'm not.
I'm, I'm gonna continue around the table, like I've been. Counselor Massier, and then Counselor, you will be next, Counselor Moore, as we go around.
Are you ready for a motion, sir?
I am waiting for a motion.
Yeah, and with the good questions and the excellent answers I've got, at first, I was a little concerned that we were giving power to the C A O of adding to people's taxes. But with the explanation to the answers of the questions, that's who should be doing it. The last thing we want is council deciding that we're gonna put something on someone's taxes. It politicizes it. We set the fees that if you have to do a certain thing, it costs you this much. If you want to pay that fee, well, then it's going on your taxes, because we have to collect the money. So certainly, with that good discussion we had in the questions, I am very ready to grant first reading to bylaw number 10,004-2025-A. The bylaw is to amend the old bylaw 24-3 to allow C A O to add costs to a tax roll in accordance with the Municipal Government Act as presented today in the report.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Counselor Massier. So while I, I totally understand this, and I, I was given reassurance by the response from Ms. Rodwell. I do think there's value in us doing a bit of research to see what other municipalities are doing. The one thing that I'm struggling with is if ratepayers come to us to ask for a penalty to be removed for extenuating circumstances. And I'm understanding that that would, that's just one example where that would not come to us. And I'm not saying that we would do that, or we, you know, I don't think even in my time here, if, if a resident has come often, it, it doesn't, they don't get what they want. But I, 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 there's just something nagging here that, you know, I, I like what I see, but I could be reassured by by seeing what other municipal, other comparable municipalities are doing before. And I'm wondering if my colleague would accept that as friendly.
No, because I, I, I don't really care what other municipalities are doing. I, I heard a good report from administration that that's what they want to do here. And I think as leaders, we stick with, so I, I don't want to defer it to find out what Rocky View or Mountain View or Comparable is doing. So I won't accept the deferral as friendly.
So I guess.
You can always make a motion to defer, and that it doesn't have to be accepted by the mover.
So with that, and I, I understand and respect my colleague. I, I would just, I would like to make a motion to defer, because not, I'm hearing that all municipalities do this, and there might be some nuances here that would just, for me, it gives me reassurance. So I move to defer.
Counselor Ramsey, you're next on the line?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. I won't support deferral. I, I certainly have heard some, you know, questions of clarity and, and maybe a little additional information from some of my colleagues. I don't see why we can't pass first reading and have that information come back with the, the next report for second reading. Why, why defer it, give it first reading and have to go through the channels? You know, we're just being asked to give first reading to this bylaw today. And, and I, I think that additional information council seeking could come back at second reading.
Counselor Kanna.
I would agree with what Counselor Ramsey said. I was gonna bring up the same thing. At second reading, we could get all that information and keep the process moving. I was quite concerned at the beginning, but after hearing a lot of the responses, I, I think I understand it better, what this is doing. And yeah, so for the deferral, I think I, I can't support it at this time. Thank you.
Counselor De Palma. Councillor Palm.
So I would support first reading, um, with, I guess, the reassurance that more information would come forward for. Uh, the following and um, and you know, even with what councillor Holzman said, you know. I guess I don't want to be, uh. You know, if this does happen to one of our residents, I don't want to be lambasted and not know, um. Cause being caught off guard and and that is not nice. So, um. So I guess I would also ask that how would that situation be dealt with in that case? So I'll I'll support first reading with the, with, you know, the information coming forward to answer some of the following. Other questions that were asked.
Thank you, councillor Holzman.
Thank you for that. And councillor DePalm, that's exactly where I'm coming from. I I can support first reading, but I want to know. If there is that charge put on a rate payer of mine, that at least I would get a report so that I would know and not be blindsided if. Because they probably won't be happy if it's on their tax bill and normally we would have had this come before council. We would have to make. Approval for it is what I'm hearing. So I can support first reading, but that is some of the questions that I would like answered on second reading. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Massey.
I'll close if you have no comments.
No, this is to deferral. This is, we have a motion to defer.
Oh, okay, I'll speak to deferral.
Talking about deferral.
Sure. So in in the discussion of the deferral, people have said that. We might hear additional information by second reading. So I'm curious on whether or not we're gonna hear that information by second reading. Two, two my fellow members here made mention that that they'd like to hear that information by second reading. Now, I haven't heard administration say that that was even capable of doing that.
Do you want your light? Yes. Ms Rodwell.
Through the C A O to council. Um, most certainly, we can have this information by second reading. We do believe that this one's gonna be a little bit research heavy because I have a sneaking suspicion that most have done this through individual bylaws. Instead of doing it through their C A O bylaw all at once. Um, so we're gonna have to sift through quite a few bylaws to get through. Uh, a response on this one, but second reading doesn't necessarily have to come back in two weeks just because it normally does. We can. Uh, wait until to bring second reading forward until we've got the report ready. So we just bring it at a later date and there's no rush on this.
Okay, I'm the only one who hasn't spoke. Um, and I'll speak to deferral. Honestly, I I don't think deferral is necessary. Um, you know, he- hearing that administration is prepared to to bring some more information to us. Uh, after first reading, uh, I think that it would just de- delay the process. Um, and so I can't support deferral for that reason. Um, councillor Moore, you may close your deferral motion.
So from a governance point of view, when I look at first reading, I think, I think what you've all said makes total sense. I I wanted to ensure that we did get that information and I wasn't sure how we could determine that we would get that information. So I can retract my motion as long as, and I think it's the consensus of most of uh council gathered here today. That when secondary is incoming, whenever it comes, that we are given that um, that information because. I think the the optics, you know. It's the delegation again of our responsibilities and I think that's what we face with our residents. So I look forward to that information and I uh, I'm sorry if it's onerous, um, as it sounds like it may be. But I think it's really valuable as we go forward and and uh move this bylaw. Thank you.
So in order to make sure that I give everyone a fair chance to speak to the original motion, because we actually had a deferral in the middle of that. Um, and councillor Moore, you you spoke last and I believe you were speaking to the original motion as well. You can, you're, are you fine? But you can continue if you wish. I'm just trying to figure where you're at. Okay. Anyone else? And I'll go around the table. If you, uh, councillor Ramsay, anything further to the original motion? Anyone else in order? Nope. Okay, seeing none. Councillor Massey's motion is 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 on the floor. You may close. Councillor Massey.
Okay, yeah, if you've got no comments on the original motion, I I'll stick with it, um. And I, and I think with that discussion, I don't want to make it real onerous to find out all our comparables. I I think it was just our others doing it was what I gathered, the additional information needed by second reading and. And then during the deferral motion, Mr. Mayor, I heard discussion that left the deferral motion and start talking about. Reporting back to council if we add something to a, to a tax bill. And I don't want to make that part of my motion because once again, that. To me, that's dangerous that every time administration finds my rate payer or does something with my rate payer, that they have to phone me to let me know about it. That that's, that's stepping into the soup kitchen. So tha- that. Discussion I heard during the discussion on deferral was certainly not part of my first reading motion.
Okay, and with those comments, have we spurred any further conversation? Because I want to make sure that. No, I know, but but um, I understand that. Um, but it's making sure that everyone else's has has understanding of where we're, what we're voting on then. Councillor Massey was very clear. All those in favor. First reading has been passed unanimously. Now, we've got one more item here today and that's item number five point five, policy number C one hundred dash twenty-five. Request for presentations to council. I imagine that's Ms Rodwell.
Yes, it is. Uh, good morning, council. We are asking you to consider policy C one hundred dash dash twenty-five. Request for presentations to council. Next slide. On September fifth of twenty twenty-three, council directed that a governance review be conducted. Following this review. Uh, council contracted George B. Cuffin Associates to conduct a governance review. On February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, council endorsed the governance review. And it included a note regarding our procedure bylaw at the time, which said that it seems to be onerous in terms of the advance notice. Uh, the public wanting to be heard. Twelve days could readily be brought into seven days. Secondly, a council policy on delegations. Could be utilized in this space, which would be viewed as a more user friendly. As well as the comments related to possible governance and priorities committee and a council protocol. On February twentieth of twenty twenty-four, council endorsed the implementation plan of the governance review, which included direction to prepare policy amendments. And determine if amendments to the procedure bylaw were required. Amendments have now been made to the procedure bylaw, a new procedure bylaw and a new committee's bylaw have been approved. Council approved the new committee's bylaw, which established the governance and priorities committee as well as the agenda committee. Now that they have been established, the request for presentation policy requires updates to reflect the new committee. The new policy delegates authority to review requests for presentations to the agenda committee in alignment with the committee's bylaw. The alternatives are to repeal policy number one point zero two seven, delegations and presentations to council and replace it with policy. C one hundred dash twenty-five, request for presentation to council, or defeat recommendation leaving the current policy in place. Administration's recommendation is to repeal and replace the delegations and presentations. With the new policy C one hundred dash twenty-five, request for presentations to council.
Okay, questions? We start with councillor Massey this time.
Yeah, I didn't have one until I just quickly looked at the new policy and. Presenters will be allotted up to fifteen minutes. Do we have to put a number in there? It'd be nice to keep them short, but boy. I've sat in this room where they've gone over the fifteen minutes and once again, who's gonna police that or is the? You know, if it's in a policy, we should be firm. So does it have to be in the policy?
It is council's policy, so it's within council's purview what the policy contains. I do believe that that is a carryover from the current policy. I'm just pulling it up to confirm. And it says, requests will normally be provided ten to fifteen minutes for presentation in the current policy. So that's where the language came from.
Opinion is that we.
Questions?
The question, so, okay, then that was my question. Then why, why is the fifteen minutes in there?
The fifteen minutes is in there because that's the standardized response provided to presenters when they're given authority to present. Uh, is that their presentation be kept to fifteen minutes plus additional time for questions and answers.
Any further councillor Massey? Further questions? Well, councillor Moore.
Thank you. So before my questions on that, at the dis- at the discretion of the chair, if it was a complex matter. Uh, would, would an extension of fifteen minutes be permitted?
Your, uh, typically these presentations happen at a committee meeting, so they typically happen at G P C. G P C doesn't have uh super lengthy rules of procedure. Um, so it doesn't describe those processes related to how presentations are extended. So by virtue of that, I would say that that would be within the chair's authority.
Good to hear. So my question, seven days, um, that's what we're recommending. I like that.
Questions?
Here comes my question. Um, so we have our agenda committee and say a resident of mine wants to come to council. And the agenda committee in their wisdom say no. So then my resident comes back to me and I say, well, you know, it's the agenda committee, but I believe that they have. A good reason to come to present to council or speak to council. What is the process for the, that councillor?
I do believe that that would be a bit of a difficult circumstance to navigate because the authority is given to the committee. Um, so a member of council would be asking to override the authorization of the committee. However, we have seen occurrences. Uh, such as last week where agenda committee reviewed a matter and didn't have a super strong feeling one way or another regarding the presentation. So the committee chose to bring it back to G P C and ask for the input of the entirety of G P C on that matter. Um, but again, it's, it also depends what hat you're wearing. Uh, when you're wearing your hat at your council meetings, the procedure bylaw does apply. And I'm just trying to pull up procedure bylaw because I do know that we addressed this. In procedure bylaw, I, my best recol- recollection is that presentations are not typically permitted. So your procedures bylaw says that requests to present at a council meeting will be deferred to the agenda committee. So there doesn't appear to be an 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 appeal mechanism on that within your procedure bylaw now.
Would it be possible to put one in?
That would require an additional bylaw amendment.
I would like that to be considered, but that's not a question.
Continue on. Um, questions, please. Questions? We'll have lots of time for comments.
Yeah, could I get some clarity? Because we're using a term two different ways in this policy first. Up above in definitions, committee is the agenda review committee, but then in. Five, or sorry, six, it's governance and priorities committee, which is a different committee. And then we go to eight where it's the committee and then we go into. Um, sorry, I just lost it here. Back into eight B, into the governance and priorities committee meeting. Can we just? Uh, add the agenda committee and, because you start getting lost in there which committee you're talking about.
Through the C A O to council, most certainly we can. Uh, I do believe that the definition is. Used correctly throughout. When it's just shortened to committee, it's agenda committee and when it's spelled out as governance and priorities committee, then it's G P C. Uh, but most certainly we can just change it to have full committee names throughout the entire policy.
Thank you. Um, one thing this doesn't address, and I I'm just curious how you see that happening is. What if the request comes in when there's one deputy mayor and then. The decision happens with the next deputy mayor, you know, in that transition period.
So I do believe that the um committees bylaw does sort of hypothesize that situation. And says that when something can cross over between two, then both can be present, both deputies can be present at agenda committee. Uh, but if it was a matter that was decided by agenda committee under the current deputy mayor scheduled for agenda committee. Under the next deputy mayor, that would be permitted because you are doing some future forecasting. When you're sitting on agenda committee, we wouldn't have it reapproved by the new deputy mayor. The decision of the prior uh formation of the committee would stand.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Councillor DePalm?
I guess, um. Yeah, I guess I don't have any comments right now. I got concerns.
Questions? Okay, councillor Holzman.
My question is, um, in number eight, I think that this was meant to address. The concern that councillor Moore had it's because it says, address request by initiating a meeting with the person making the request. The mayor and members of administration. And at that time, if the request is related to the council's area, they may be entitled. Titled to attend the meeting and then the decision made. So my question is, is I think that was the intent in there that if we had a rate payer, would that be correct in that assumption or not?
Ms Rodwell.
Through the C A O to council, it it is in a way and it isn't in a way. It, that was more to address when. Uh, request for presentation was not applicable to the entirety of council. Um, so that then it could be handled in a meeting instead of ha- being handled by all of council, all of senior administration, all of legislative services. It's a bit more of a a time save and efficiency thing. Also typically in those situations, those uh requesters don't always realize that the meetings are public. And that their presentation would be a a matter of of essentially public record. And so sometimes it's it's more appropriate to address it in a private meeting than having it be in a forum of all of council in a public setting.
But continuing along those lines, the process I think is outlined pretty clearly in B and C. Because if they felt that they wanted to present, it says that a decision of council could be made in a public matter. Is that correct? In a public manner?
If that one in particular is if the presentation relates directly to a council decision. Then it needs to go to a council meeting and through those council meeting processes. Um, but yes, and this policy most certainly doesn't, does not ever negate the ability of a councillor to meet with someone. Uh, who they represent. Most certainly, you're always welcome to do that. This is just a scenario where they first asked for a presentation. And the presentation may not be the most appropriate avenue.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Councillor Massey, um, at this point in time, we will, we will take a motion and we will take. Uh, uh, both opinion and questions from now on.
Okay, I I do have another question. Councillor Moore mentioned seven days. Something's been shortened. I'm looking in the report. You talk about procedure bylaw, S polka dot one, two, polka dot two. Could certainly be reduced from twelve to seven. But I thought we were talking about this new policy and I don't see any days of seven and twelves and so I'm. I'm confused on how the report recommendation could easily be, has any bearings on the policy that we're debating.
Ms Rodwell.
Through the C A O to council, uh, we most certainly recognize the recommendation from the governance review. However, we don't have any bodies that meet more frequently than once every two weeks. Um, so we, the dates were specified in the old one and when counted out, it was. A minimum of twelve days that a request would be processed. Agenda committee uh is a little bit more nimble in that we have been doing some electronic approvals with the agenda committee when appropriate. Uh, when they're very simple, minor changes or, you know, things aren't, aren't ready yet. We have been alerting them by email and so technically we could address a request for presentation. Uh, through an email instead of through the the standardized meeting process, which is every two weeks. Uh, but most certainly we do recognize that we don't have a definitive timeline where a request may be responded to. But if administration felt like there was a lot of immediacy to it, we would try to find avenues to address it as quickly as possible.
That's what I heard. It's got new relevancy on the policy anyways. It's just.
The dates are not in the policy.
On the practice kit. Dates aren't in the policy. You get it as quick as you can. Just to get it on the table, Mr. Mayor, you're looking for a motion.
Yes.
I'll move that we repeal policy one polka dot oh two seven and replace it with the new policy C one hundred dash twenty-five.
Councillor Moore.
So with your indulgence, Mayor, would I have one more question?
Of course you can. I just want, I just want, not, you got questions or comments at this point?
Thank you. Um, so. If something, if if something comes to the agenda committee and they decide, no, this is just to help me through this. Do they have to state reasons why this cannot be brought before council? So it's public, you know, it's. It's not because I don't want, you know, division three to be represented or, you know, not that that would ever happen, but you know, just to. You know, are there clear reasons why?
Through the C A O to council, uh, typically that is not a requirement of the policy as it's currently written. However, as a matter of practice, that routinely occurs.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
And if I may, this might help you a bit. Um, a lot of times we offer, we typically, not always, but often. Offer alternatives. Uh, we've shared your email with all of council so that they can be aware of this matter. We've provided it to the appropriate members of administration so they can choose whether they meet with you or not. So we typically do try to give them some form of assistance. Uh, request for presentations, it's. We're seeing very few requests for presentations that are actually relevant to council or relevant to G P C. And then we're providing them with those alternatives uh on a fairly routine basis. And then we're providing them with those alternatives on a fairly routine basis.
So I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And, you know, in principle, you know, I like this. However, again, you know, it's really important that our residents know that they have an opportunity to come before council. And I really appreciate the work the agenda committee does. I am worried that it's that committee that determines so much. And I would like to see a mechanism whereby if, you know, we hear back from our resident and that, you know, we believe that they may have a good reason, that there is a mechanism where it can be brought back to this whole body where we can talk about it. And I don't mean in any way to diminish the responsibility and the good work of the agenda committee. But I think, for me, you know, I mean, I've heard, and I know we've been growing through this, you know, and we've done really well through this process. But I've heard a few counselors say, "Oh, I wanted that on the agenda," and, you know, it never goes anywhere. And I know that's not a presentation, but it just concerns me that there isn't a mechanism to come back and at least talk to the whole of council if it is an issue that is felt strongly by a group or, you know, a resident in the county. So as it is, I can't support it, but with a mechanism, I could for appeal. Or a, not appeal, because that's too formal, a discussion with all of council and the reasons why.
Ms. Rodwell?
Through the CAO, one of the ideas that we did have at one point in time was that when we sent out the email responding, that we forward that response to all of council. So if that be something you'd be interested in, most certainly, that would be a very easy add to the policy. That way, all of council would be informed of the response, reformed of the request, and have a bit of a status update. And then, as we'd said, if you had concerns with that, you can raise that as an inquiry. You can ask for follow-up as an agenda, as a committee report. You know, you have a few options there just to request more information. And then most certainly, if you felt passionately about it enough, you have the alternatives to do things like set up a private meeting to bring it as a notice of motion. Like, there's other avenues as well that are laid out in the governance.
Ms. Rodwell, you're a fairy godmother. You have waved your wand. And now I feel great that there is a way that, and I like the fact that, because we're sort of in the dark what's coming to council. So that would be awesome if that came to us. So we're aware of what's going on. And if it is, as you say, we're particularly passionate, we can talk about it as a group. So I will support your motion, Counselor.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I certainly support the policy. I think this is, this is formalizing practice we're already doing. You know, and hearing some of the concerns around the agenda committee and how this gets to us, I think it's been done in the past where, you know, if there's something kind of questionable or maybe doesn't relate to the two folks on the agenda committee, it has come to this committee to get clarity on whether we should bring them in or not. You know, I think taking it further dilutes, you know, having an agenda committee, which is something we were kind of upset we didn't have before, the cuff report. And now we do, and we're still not totally satisfied with how it's working. And I get now that it's in practice, there's some kinks to work out. But, you know, moving forward with the deputy mayor terms, we're going to see two-month rotation in the committee. And to me, that's going to alleviate any concern that one counselor maybe has too much control over what's coming or what the situation is because we're going to be changing every two months. And so, you know, fully recognizing the challenges. But I think this policy formalizes what we've been doing in the past. And I think we've had good communication when these have come forward.
Thank you. Counselor Kanna?
Thank you, yeah. I'll support the motion. Yeah, I think this brings clarity. And, yeah, like Counselor Ramsey just said, that two-month rotation is going to speed up everybody's understanding of the agenda committee and whatnot. And I think it's going to be better. And I think it'll, this will work out so that people have an understanding of how to get to council. So I'll support it. Thank you.
Counselor DePalm?
You know, I guess I still have some concerns. I agree with, you know, the direction we're going and stuff. But as per presenters, you know, I do struggle with the fact that if, you know, I realize it's going to be two months. But if some don't want stuff to move forward, I have concerns even going, you know, forward that other counselors can use this as a way to not get stuff in front of council. I guess is how I see it. So I totally get this in principle. And, you know, I guess right now, some of us feel in the dark about the agenda committee. So... Yeah, so I don't know if I'm fully on board with this right now. Because, like I said, I have some issues with about how to get presenters in here, so.
Thank you. Counselor DePalm, or sorry, Counselor Holsman?
Thank you. I think we've had good discussion on this. And this just covers off the final stages of our governance review, and I can support this. I think it's very clear, and I like the fact that if there is something that has been rejected, we might get a heads up. But we would get a heads up. I hear that from Ms. Rodwell. And like, I don't see that we're not getting presentations to council. Last week alone, we had three on a GPC agenda. So I think it's a good thing, and I think we need to have it clear in policy, and I'll totally support it. Thank you.
Mr. Hersberg?
Leveraging my time between this issue and lunch, hoping that the mover will find this friendly, or at least he's hungry enough to consider, we would make a small change to this policy to note that item about providing correspondence for the rest of council, should something be turned down. Go ahead.
And also the committee, full committee names, as Counselor Kanna requested.
We started with Counselor Masser on this one. I'm the only one who hasn't spoken. I think we've came a long way, folks, from where we were before we even had an agenda committee. And of course, of course, these types of policies can always be tweaked as we go. But I think with the assurance given by Ms. Rodwell that there are ways that the counselors can bring items forward, you know, should the committee not be able to fit it in where they would think it should be. I think that's a plus. And recognizing even last week that we actually, the committee didn't know about one item, and it came to all the rest of council to actually get your input on it. So I think that we're doing our best, you know, to try to make this transition. And I'm actually very happy with the point that we're at right now. But recognizing that there will be amendment to the recommendation, and we're all aware of that. Counselor Masser, it was your motion? I think it was your motion, wasn't it? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that, Mr. Hersberg, to add that to the actual motion. I mean, I certainly trusted administration to let us know. But if it's the formality of getting into the motion, I think it really appeased Counselor Moore and even myself. Because I do like the agenda committee saying no once in a while. Because what happens is that a single counselor gets their own ratepayers in front of council, and we waste six people's time because of one counselor. But on the other hand, if agenda's committee decides, "We don't want to hear that presenter," four of us can say, "Yes, we do." And so that ability for four of council to speak on behalf of council is a nice assurance. So that's it. I really like the motion, and I like the amendments.
All those in favor? Opposed? So I take it, Counselor, were you in favor or opposed? Okay, Counselor DePalm was opposed. The motion has been carried. I'm looking at our agenda. It looks like we're almost out. Go ahead.
I would move that we adjourn at 12:08.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one's opposed. Well, I didn't see your hand go up. That was why. We're all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. 12:08.
You got GPC later then?
We're going to have lunch. What time?